I would support anything that's going to be beneficial to the students and the staff at the high school, but there's some other serious issues that we have to address first. But I'm always open to work with any ideas, whatever we can do, I'm there for it 100%. If it's going to be beneficial to the school.
Mr. Biancomano, I don't want vegetables.
My favorite meal? Well certainly, I agree with Ms. Waiters that anything that would be beneficial, but I also agree that there were bigger priorities. I know that the school district has been trying to get more green lately. We did talk about solar panels on top of our several schools and things like that. And obviously, I'm all for them as long as they're funded by grants, obviously, and not coming out of the budget because we do have many, many budget constraints and things like that. So absolutely, I'm for it as long as there's no budget constraints to it.
Ms. Rhodes-Curts.
I actually like that idea and it can tie it in with the science program. We have a similar program in the school where I work and we have an area set off where the kids can grow vegetables and stuff like herbs. And maybe we can partner with the county for the park across the street, set an area aside for our children and tie it into the culinary also, use it for cooking and stuff. Great idea.
Mr. Murray.
We need best-in-class facilities for 2014, not 1964. Since the high school was built, the iPhone was invented, the internet was invented, the PC was invented, we put a man on the moon after the high school was built. So we have a $64 million budget and yet we have no, we're not spending any money on facilities. So a vegetable garden on the roof, sure, why not? But how about a whole new facility that actually can handle crops on the roof and can handle best-in-class technology and a best-in-class swimming pool and those kinds of things? Thank you.
Ms. Danskier.
Somebody in this room feels that that's important. And if that's important to somebody in this room, then it's important to me. Because as a Board of Education trustee, I want to know what's important to the community so that we can make some changes. Green living is very near and dear to my heart. I work part-time for a renewable energy company. I sit on the Green Faith Certification Program at my synagogue. And I think growing vegetables is a great way to supplement our free and reduced lunch program. We can grow those vegetables and give it to those children. There is a way that we can tie it to the environment. There's global issues that are involved in our environment. And I think it's important for the children to know that every little thing that we do to help our environment, this is their future. And I think it's a fabulous idea and I don't think we should belittle it because there's more important things that need to be done.
Okay, time. Do we have rebuttals? Go ahead.
Mr. Biancomano talked about a grant for the program. Well, we saw what happened with the grant for the laptops. We had hundreds of thousands of dollars sitting gathering dust in the utility closet. So I would only hope that if we were able to get a grant for vegetables on the roof, that they wouldn't just become rotten up there as well.
I would hope so as well.
Is anyone for rotten vegetables here? Ms. Waiters, Ms. Waiters indicating she prefers support for rotting food. All right, let's touch the button again. And what do we have here? This will be Danskier, Murray, Waiters, Biancomano, Rhodes-Curts. So we asked before, we're getting a lot of the charter school questions. And so this is a perfectly balanced question again, so I thought I would read it. It says regarding controversial lawsuit against the DOE and the Ola Charter School. If you had to vote for or against the lawsuit, how would you vote and why? For or against the lawsuit? Ms. Danskier.
As I said before, the lawsuit talks about segregation. And if segregation is the issue, then call the Justice Department and let them address it as a civil rights issue. There is no reason why one school should be suing another school, especially since the Hoboken Charter School actually, the Hoboken, I'm sorry, the Ola Charter School, I'm a little nervous, was presented to this Board of Education as a program that we wanted to have in the public school. It was a dual-language immersion program. It was shot down, they decided that they didn't want to fund it. So now they went to the state and they got charter school status. And we have become the model language school in the entire state of New Jersey. And all they're trying to do is shut us down.
Mr. Murray.
Should be pointed out that Ms. Stromwell is not here tonight. Voted to continue to increase the legal fees from the public school to continue the lawsuit for Ola. On a practical level, again, what we're talking about in terms of that lawsuit and what it would accomplish even if the public schools win, was this penny versus the $2 budget? So is it really worth all the resources and time and taking money out of my kids' playgrounds and classrooms to fund this? Absolutely not. Also, the amount of money that goes back, that would go back to the public school is about $12,000 a year roughly from what the state gives to the Ola or any charter school. The fact of the matter is that the district in classroom spends just that amount of money on teachers and on pencils. So there is no saving. You don't have the overhead covered. So it's a fallacy to think that it's a benefit to public schools to have the kids out of the charter school.
Ms. Waiters.
I'm totally against it. And I wish this board, because they had the majority, wasn't so mind-controlling. The parents of Ola filled the Board of Ed meeting one night and they got so emotional to see a kid stand at a microphone and said, "Why don't you agree to extend this COVID-out education?" But they had a motive. And Ms. Stromwell anonymously appointed, she didn't have a clue what she was voting for. They took a known disregard to all of those mothers, a known disregard to the students. My thing is the children, run for this board and at least have some compassion for the children. And it's working well. If it's not broke, don't fix it. Extend. I said it that night and I say it again. The lawsuit is frivolous and it's unnecessary. Thank you.
Mr. Biancomano.
As I said earlier, I really believe that this is a controversial lawsuit that pits one group of parents against another and diverts dollars from our mission as educators. I really, really believe that. And that's why I voted against the original and then continuing to fund it as well. I received so many emails and phone calls from Ola parents in the last few months when this lawsuit was initiated. And all I can say is I'm sorry because I wish my board members felt the way I felt about this, that we should take this money, especially after laying off school bus drivers for special needs students last June. We should take this money and put it back into the classrooms. And I just truly feel that, obviously without getting into any confidential information since it is pending litigation, that it's just wrong and it divides our community. So I just hope that it could be dropped in the future hopefully. Thank you.
Ms. Rhodes-Curts.
It is no secret that I voted no for the lawsuit. I voted against it. And it's no secret that, like Ryan already said, Ms. Stromwell voted for it. Shame she's not here to explain why. I'll explain why I voted against it. Because the legal fees, I believe, are just going to add up as the time goes on and it's going to cost more and more money to our district. And I believe it is a frivolous lawsuit. Ola could have been a district program, once again, kids first, voted against it. And now Ola's doing what they promised outside the structure of our district. This whole thing could have been avoided. So that's my answer. We should Stromwell have an answer.
Can I just make one more comment?
Go ahead.
Because my time is up. That was the issue that perturbed me the most as well was we did so well, I thought, in fighting legal fees, getting it down from 156, 156% over the state average. And then all of a sudden, they want to use these legal fees to have a lawsuit against members of our own community that we're representing. And I certainly, I mean, again, that was the issue that perturbed me the most. Thank you.
Go ahead. I heard him next. Yes.
You know, I really feel for the parents of Ola. They came to a board meeting in the Wallace Gym. They talked about pathways to find for their students beyond junior high into the high school. Many of them got up and spoke and they brought their children late into the night to talk about how do we find a pathway forward. And the Kids First BOE basically said to them, "It's too late, not in my gym. How dare you come here and talk about a pathway forward." This is going to continue until we change the people we elect to the board.
Ms. Danskier.
I forgot to mention that I am working with one of the New Jersey Assemblymen who has been in deep discussions with the Commissioner of Education to revamp the funding formula. Because it is the funding formula that's creating all the controversy. Ola educates 11% of the children in this community only using 5% of the budget. There are many innovative ideas that could be brought to the district and this one was one of them. And they closed the door. And if we don't, if we continue to close the door and we continue to create barriers where we cannot have innovation and we can't have best-in-class, we will never have a school program, a district that we can all be proud of and that we can all send our children to.
All right, so moving on. Next will be Waiters, Danskier, Murray, Rhodes-Curts and Biancomano. Okay, so this question is about instruction. I'm actually surprised it took this long to get to this. It's, we probably should have started this, right? So what are the specific strategies you will pursue at the school level to improve the quality of instruction? How will you ensure the quality of teaching and, I think, consulting? Teaching and, well, something, high. Quality of teaching high, quality of instruction high. What will you do about that? What do you think about that? What are the best strategies? Ms. Waiters.
First of all, the best strategy is to keep in mind that even though the majority is still kids first, it's still not too late. And I will be willing to work with them, not against them. And I will watch who we hire. I want to be a part of the process with the new superintendent. It's about accountability. I will hold him accountable for his staff. And I want every teacher interviewed. I will make sure that we don't hire somebody that we don't know anything about. And I will just stay involved like I'm doing now. This is the National Education Association. This is the NJEA. I stay involved with the school on a state level. So whatever I can bring back into our city, that's what I will work with. But right now, as you see in the past, kids first has not been a favorite of nobody, you know, as far as the school district go. And that's the first thing I'm going to change. I want all of us to work together and communicate together and not against each other.
Ms. Danskier.
Every school in this district has amazing, amazing teachers. We know it. I've met some of them myself. I've read about others. And the problem is that this board has decided that they are going to micromanage everything. It's the superintendent's job to figure out what the best teaching methods are and how you improve the quality. I don't think the quality of our teaching in this community is bad. I think it's fantastic. But we do not have an administration that can direct these teachers, give them a strategy, give them a plan, carry it through. You cannot have best practices if you continue to change direction, you know, six times in eight years. So we owe it to our teachers and we owe it to our children that we don't micromanage them and let the superintendent do his job.
Mr. Murray.
We have to let the educators educate. I don't pretend to be an educator. I want the administration and the teachers to educate, to have the input, to have the say in how best do we instruct the children to learn in the classroom. Our test scores, our low test scores are a direct result of the Kids First Board micromanaging and pushing out the superintendents over and over and over again and having a new starting position over and over and over again. And I feel for the teachers because they don't know which direction to go in. Every time a new superintendent comes in, it's like starting from day one all over again. And how do we move forward?
Ms. Rhodes-Curts.
Well, to start with the improvements, we need to start with stopping the revolving door once again of administrators. This causes confusion. Again, the CUSAC score has plummeted to 45 in the area of curriculum. That's a problem. That's going to be a big problem with the upcoming PARC test. Because the PARC test is heavily aligned with the New Jersey State Core Curriculum. If we weren't following the New Jersey State Core Curriculum as we were supposed to be following it, that's going to be a problem for our students taking this test. So we need to address it and look at our district improvement plan, which would be presented at our next board meeting for everybody who's interested. And that's a start to better curriculum.
Mr. Biancomano.
We really do have some great teachers in this district. We really, really do. None more evident than Mr. Matone becoming New Jersey School Teacher of the Year this year. And I was so proud of him, I really was. I really, really was. But I certainly believe that the problem does exist at the top. And more than superintendent change, the revolving door of superintendents and business administrators, we've also had a revolving door of curriculum directors. I think we've had four curriculum directors in the three years that I've been on the board. And to me, I mean, when the teachers don't see, when the teachers see that their superiors are constantly changing, how can they gain confidence? So I really believe the problem starts at the top. Thank you.
Any rebuttals? Go ahead, Mr. Murray.
Going back to the CUSAC score, the last board BOE meeting, there were several members of Kids First that actually, when addressed, said, "Well, we would do the same thing over again." So it's just the arrogance of they know the right way. Not the state, not the teachers, not the administrators. It's their arrogance that led us to this position with the CUSAC score, that led to the illegal firing of the kindergarten aides. It's the arrogance that they know best. And maybe that's why they didn't show up for that.
Anyone else? Ms. Danskier.
The Curriculum Committee for the last five years has been chaired by Ms. Ruth McAllister Tyroller, who is a Kids First trustee. In those last four years, we went from scoring an 87 out of 100 to a 45 out of 100. Ruth has stepped down, has given the baton to Monica Stromwell, who is also was put in place by Kids First after Carmelo Garcia left his seat. And she has the least amount of tenure on this board, nine months. And she, her seat is up for reelection. So she's got nine months of experience. Her seat is up for election, which means that if she doesn't get elected, then once again, we're going to have a new curriculum. And she's not even here to defend herself.
Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Waiters?
I'm sorry. Lynn, I just want to put something on top of what you just said. Remember, she was anonymously voting. When I was one of the candidates and Kids First had an opportunity to put someone of minority, okay? And even Mr. Garcia, if you watched the last meeting before he left, he asked, he said, "Why don't you give somebody a chance?" Okay, Pat Waiters, going to the meeting for seven years, very involved in the Board of Ed. I was overlooked, okay? And it was sad because I made it my business to attend and my uncle David Little had just passed away. And I still showed up for the interview process and they picked Ms. Stromwell. So her ex told me she left after they nominated her anonymously, Kids First, okay, for Ms. Zimmer. I asked her, "Are you from Hoboken?" "I've been living here a couple of years, I'm not from here." And then to see her at the very next meeting, call a vote. Call a vote and she had to because she was being controlled by her anonymous vote. And she's not here tonight anonymously. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
I work in a county facility where many of the county curriculum meetings are held up there. And that's how I knew that the CUSAC reports were out. The school districts have received them. People in my school were ecstatic about their scores. They were so happy, they're like, "Oh, we did so well." And so I sent out emails, as is the procedure. I contacted the superintendent and the then board president. And I didn't receive a reply. So I waited, I sent out another email. I didn't receive a reply. Then in the weekly report down the road somewhere, the superintendent back then said about the, they were appealing it. They were appealing it. So they weren't releasing it. In closed session, I asked about them. And it wasn't until a public meeting, when I insisted, I asked about it, what are our scores that it was revealed? I just wanted to make that known.
Next refresh is going to be Danskier, Waiters, Rhodes-Curts, Biancomano and Murray. And so this will be a moderator prerogative question. What was your favorite course in school and/or who is your favorite teacher and why? Ms. Danskier.
My favorite course in school, much to my son's chagrin, was actually math. And I actually used to stay after school so that I could meet with my teacher, who was Mr. Lucas, I think it was in eighth grade, and do additional math problems. So I know it sounds a little nerdy, but that was my favorite subject. And it continues to be something that I enjoy, I think.
Were we in algebra then, something like that, or was it pre? All right, Ms. Waiters, your favorite course and/or teacher?
It was called reading, writing and arithmetic back in the days. I don't want to fulfill my age. But do you mean grammar school or high school block hours? Well, I'm going to say grammar school. I had a teacher, Mr. Slink, I loved him daily. It was history and just learning about my past and, you know, and comparing the past with what my ancestors been through. I liked African-American history, I attended Jersey City School, Snyder High, and I hold that man D.F.F. in my heart. He taught me so much. And secondly, public speaking at a community college. I'm quick to grab the microphone after my teacher told me how to speak in public and don't be shy and that was just recently. So public speaking and his...
So you gave two answers. That's really filibuster, I think, with the two answers. Really just asked for the one answer. Ms. Rhodes-Curts, on your favorite course and/or teacher?
Okay, that would be in Hoboken High School. And as I said before, I'm a product of the Hoboken Projects, Hoboken has an authority. And we were poor, but we didn't know we were poor. And my favorite teacher was Mr. Joe Carrato. He was the English teacher. And he thawed out of the box back then. And he would bring in his little record player and play records of opera. And he would be so theatrical about it. And I would just sit there like amazed that to this day, on the Sunday when my husband, my Irish husband is cooking gravy, he plays all the classical music and the kids, when they were little, would come home and their friends would come in and look, "What is that?" And they'd go, "Oh, that's gravy music." So yeah, Mr. Carrato.
All right, Mr. Biancomano.
So many to pick from. Certainly, Ms. Manchillo in elementary school was absolutely so much fun. I mean, she made learning fun. And certainly, can I have two of those?
Go ahead.
Certainly, I have a master's degree in Seton Hall and Teacher Communication. And I love public speaking, I really, really do. And I remember Dr. Graham always said, "Public speaking is storytelling. Talk with people and not talk at people." And I think I'm going to live that through. Certainly, I lived through my career for NBC. And so I'm going to live that through the rest of my life, so.
All right, Mr. Murray, your favorite teacher and/or course?
I had Mr. McDonald in the fourth, fifth and sixth grade. It was kind of a progressive class where it was a mixture of fourth, fifth and sixth graders. So I don't want anybody to think that I went to a really tiny school and didn't have a teacher. But you know, I hadn't thought about him in years and it's really that he cared so much. I mean, he was also the coach of the baseball team and the football team. And I just remember we would pile in the back of his pickup truck, which is completely illegal to do today, and we'd drive to different towns and play football and baseball. You know, it was the caring that he brought to it, to spend a lot of extra time to make sure that my mom was running late to pick me up, she was a single mom, that he would stay with me at the school until some of my mom kind of ran late a lot, to 5:30, 6:00, 7:00 o'clock. He did make a very big impact on my life.
Okay. I'm not expecting rebuttals on that. Like, "That was not your favorite teacher." I know you're lying. All right, so, and three years with the same teacher. It wasn't because we were held back twice. I'm trying to admit it's not lying. So moving on, next would be Biancomano, Danskier, Waiters, Rhodes-Curts and Murray. This is about the facilities in town. And we mentioned something, you know, about the roof of the high school and vegetables a while ago, but this is a more general question. With a growing student population, the district will face a facilities crisis, crunch. Facilities crunch in the near future. Please explain your plan for facilities, Mr. Biancomano.
Well certainly, in terms of student enrollment, if you're looking at early childhood enrollment, there's 745 students and many of them attend parent's school. So we are going to be happy to expand that school. But certainly, if you look at the high school, the high school in the last three years went from just being 9 through 12 to 8, 8 through 12 to 7 through 12 to becoming a junior-seeker high school. So there's certainly a lot of room in the high school to work on facilities and things like that. But I think when the time comes, we really need to look at an early childhood program because it is so popular and possibly opening up more spaces. I mean, the district offices were moved to Denver School not too long ago because we were trying to open up more space in Wallace School. Certainly, moving the district offices to open up classrooms for these at Denver School might be a possibility. Thank you.
Ms. Danskier.
Last week, I was in the Demarest School because I was attending the Curriculum Subcommittee that was being held by Monica Stromwell, only to learn that she changed the date and didn't let anybody know. But what was great is that I had a chance to walk on the second floor and I noticed that there's about six to eight classrooms that each had one desk in it, a desk in a file cabinet. One classroom had two desks in it. And I'm thinking to myself, this is abusive use of space. There is no reason why we should have one desk in a classroom that can hold 22, 23, 24 students. So I think what we need to do is we need to look at the facilities all together as one, you know, one tour and figure out how we can best use our facilities because I'm sure there's ways that we can save some money.
Ms. Waiters, on facilities.
I've been saying this and it's so mind-bothering. I will work with the city council first of all, because I'm tired of running to Hoboken. And every time I make a right turn, I see properties being built saying luxury condos. Build a school. Build a school. And the idea is not to cram a bunch of kids in one school. Putting the sixth and seventh and eighth graders in the high school is not the answer either because it's a distraction for the kid. I know I couldn't learn if I had 25 disruptive kids in a class and it could be two in there that want to learn. It's overcrowded and it's not the key either. I will get with my city council, especially if Mayor shouldn't be involved on a political level. But if you want to get involved, Kids First, she should give us some of this space that these condos is going up on and build a school. I've been saying it since like four years now.
Ms. Rhodes-Curts.
I believe we should build a new school. I believe we were supposed to build a new school. Perry, I believe you were on the board when that was started. And unfortunately, we, it never came to fruition once again. Hoboken got cheated out of it from the, I guess it was the, what was it called then? The School Development Authority, no, the School Construction. And Union City got the beautiful new school. Harrison got the beautiful new school. And Hoboken didn't. And we were the Abbott District that was supposed to get it. So I think we need to petition training once again. Where is our school that we were promised? Where is our school that we were promised?
Mr. Murray on facilities?
When elected, I promised to vote and to fight never to have the sixth grade in the middle school. Never, ever, ever to have the sixth grade in the middle school. I think that we have to look at having the junior and senior high in the same building right now. I just don't see how that is able to work. Where it really, where you have different age groups that need different types of things, mixing together. The people who said, who thought it were a good idea, I'm there when they get out of school. I see that they mix together. There's just no way to deny that. And there are a lot of empty classrooms. I think there are twelve empty classrooms right now. So we do have a little bit of room to grow and we do need a plan which the board continually does not provide on budget, on facilities, on curriculum. It's a rudderless ship.
Any more on this?
I'd like to...
Go ahead.
When it comes to the middle school, I believe in it. And I believe it's the, I would like a fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth, like my daughter had. My son didn't. He had sixth, seventh, and eighth. And I saw the difference. That's when we won the awards as the parent group that we were because the focus stayed on that particular age group. They didn't get lost in the shuffle where all the attention went to the pre-K or, you know, the primary grades. And it really, really works. It does. The middle school works, I think, much better than the, what they're doing now with the high school and this seventh and eighth together. I think they should have their own school, their own place.
Go ahead, Mr. Murray.
If they were to put the sixth grade with the junior high, my son would be ten years old entering the sixth grade, sharing a facility with seventeen and eighteen-year-olds. It's unconscionable.
I was talking about a middle school and not the junior high school.
Middle school. Anyone else? All right. Pressing the magic button. We next have Bianca Mano, Dansker, Rhodes Kearns, Waiters, and Murray. Uh, the next question reads, "To all panels, what would be your position on giving each school complete autonomy, eliminating most central administrative functions, the way charter schools work," explains. The idea is often used as student-based budgeting where the money just flows based on the number of kids and then each school principal manages that amount of money. So your, what would be your particular view on giving each school complete autonomy, eliminating most central administrative functions? Mr. Bianca Mano?
Well, certainly, it's something to look at in the future as we go throughout the years for our budget constraints. Obviously, we're state-regulated more than other schools are, so we would have to discuss the state or petition training if we wanted to go that route in doing so. But if it is more cost-efficient, I would certainly be open to looking at it and going forward.
Even though the charter schools may have some autonomy, they still have to apply for a renewal every five years. And they have to answer to the state on what they've done in those five years and how they've achieved their goals and how they achieved the scores. So I'm not sure that giving a school complete autonomy without having some kind of, you know, checking or looking over what they've done and what they've accomplished is necessarily a great idea.
Ms. Rhodes Kearns?
Yeah, I'm not sure what you can and cannot do, what the guidelines are from the state as far as public schools go with the, I believe you have to have a starting order, the superintendent, the building principals, the school social workers. And so I'm not sure that that could be done at this time, maybe, if the legislators decide to change the rules perhaps. But right now, I don't think that's, that can be done.
Ms. Waiters?
I was there at the last evaluation for the charter school when they walked through to do the grading score. And I know for a fact that it's a state regulation. So I would have to see more, look into it with the state because I'm not really familiar with that. But like I said, it's a good idea, you know, I'm with it. But the state still has some type of input with the charter school. But the charter school board, I'm looking at this other meeting I attend, the charter school board apparently seems to be like on a private level when it comes down to the administrator. Because I was always confused with that. They had a director, which was Mr. Deepestow, plus administrator, but I thought they was still under one superintendent. So I'm not even clear to the question exactly, but anything that can cut costs, I'm with it.
Mr. Murray?
One potential pitfall to complete autonomy is the revolving door of principals. So now you've taken it from a revolving door of superintendents all the way down to multiple people revolving around. And then how are we going to manage those budgets? And not to mention the multiple or the revolving door of business administrators. So now we have lots and lots of spinning wheels that nobody really has control of. But I think that the real heart of the question is saving money. It's not about administration, it's about saving money. So again, we go back to the two dollars where one dollar is spent in overhead. How do we reduce this one extra dollar that doesn't go into the classroom? And that's an answer that Kids First and Kids First for Progress and Monica just can't answer. Or maybe they can, but they just don't want to share.
All right, any other chat on this? Okay. And I think we're going to now move to final statements. I'm worried Eduardo would collapse at any moment, so that's why, now leaning against the wall, he was standing just by himself when we began. And so, so I will hit refresh. And we see the order is Waiters, Bianca Mano, Murray, Dansker, and Rhodes Kearns. And so this, of course, by tradition, we will allow applause. And I think this is sixty-second closing statement. I'm getting a yes from Helen. Uh, so we begin with a closing. And remember, you know, this is not a paid position, folks. These people just do this, run for these offices out of civic pride and to help their community. And so I think we should show them all appreciation. Ms. Waiters first with the closing statement.
First of all, I would like to thank O L G., Ms. Helen, Mr. Bob?
Bow.
Mr. Bow. I would like to thank everybody and I did make it. I also would like to thank my campaign manager for all this hard work, Mr. Brinko. And you know, for having confidence in me and you know what I do and I will continue to do it. I want you to know one thing in closing, please don't be fooled by the hype. I could take the label off this tea and at the end of the day, it's still iced tea. Don't be confused with the Kids First, with the New Progress. There will not be no progress as long as you keep politics in the school system. Let's get rid of the politics. Let's change from tea to water and going green. I'm with everything that's good for the people. I will be the voice for the people, whether you're Olaf, Charter, whatever school it is. I'm here to work as a board member for the whole city of Hoboken, put it into the segregation. And I want you to give me a chance as a minority to be a voice for everybody and just really fight for equality for the whole Hoboken High School, the grammar school, the whole school system.
Time.
And thanks, I'm wrapping it up real quick. And thanks for that camera because I hope people seeing this, and please, don't be fooled by the hype and vote for me in the booth and no illegal tactics.
Mr. Bianca?
Again, would like to thank all of the volunteers who put together this great forum tonight. Many issues were discussed, some differences of opinion, as well as many concerns were brought to light. As the only person running in this year's election without children, I feel I represent a large portion of the Hoboken community. Although I believe it is important to have parent involvement on boards, I will bring a different, unemotional, and logical perspective. With the experience of my running mate Francis Rhodes Kearns, who is a parent that sent all of our children to our schools, we form a team which best represents the issues facing our district. I remind you that although our primary focus on the board is to enhance student achievement, we are responsible for a nearly sixty-five million dollar budget, of which more than half comes from taxpayer money. This is why having Fran and I as fiscal watchdogs the last few years and in the future is vital. I ask on November fourth, you vote four and eight, the team you appreciate for the education of all students.
Brian Murray?
I'd like to thank the Elks, Helen, Bob, the Quality of Life Coalition. I really appreciate the job that the Quality of Life Coalition does, even if Parents for Progress, Kids First does not. I'm super excited about the future, the possibilities of our schools. We have so much untapped potential. This is an important election. You have three groups that are vying to be your representatives for your children and for the town. One group is the remnant of the old guard. The second group is the Kids First by any other name, who did not want to come here and share ideas because perhaps they don't have any new ideas. And it's, the third group is the one I'm proud to be a part of, is Parents for Change because we really will make a difference. Please vote one, six, seven.
Ms. Dansker?
There's so much work to do over the next few years and the community really needs board members who are committed to the process and who are willing to work hard. We need to have an open door policy. We need to bring the community together. We need to bridge the community with the district. I am looking forward to laying the groundwork to do just that. We are three parents. We care very deeply. We're inspired and motivated by our children. We want to build a best-in-class high school that can be the heartbeat of this community that we can all be a part of and that can be the basis of our social life and our personal lives and just, you know, really be able to do, you know, great things for our children. It's obvious that the Kids First folks are not here tonight. It shows that they have absolutely no dedication to the process or really care about what the community wants, and that's why they're not here. And so, vote one, six equals seven.
And Ms. Rhodes Kearns?
I would also like to thank Mrs. Minogue and the Coalition for having us here. And I find it appalling that some of those who are seeking office for the Board of Ed decided not to show, they failed to show. I'm proud of my record as being a watchdog for our children. I voted against tax increases while the Kids First cronyism has led to the low morale among faculty, administrators, even parents. As I said in the past, I'm the mother of two children who attended our schools. And I will fight to prevent Kids First from further damaging the reputation of our schools. And I will fight to restore a real working curriculum.
First of all, I want to thank all of you for being here. It's really, really important that every segment of the community is involved in this election that we're going to have on November the fourth. It's critical that we get the citizens out. And for that, I want to also express some thanks to Teresa Howard, who was here this evening and who helped us get information out about this through the Hoboken Family Alliance. And Teresa, thank you for doing that. There are other people I have to help to mention because they work so hard on this event. And we all, all work very hard on it to try to get it put together. First of all, I'd like to thank Eduardo Gonzalez, who stood up the whole time, never opted to sit down. And thank you for being our timekeeper. I also want to thank the selection panel members here who were with me. Melissa Aberneth, who is our absolutely necessary person on our board. And also Tom, who is on our board, but he's also the chairman of our Committee for a Green Hoboken. And he puts together those green drinks and all kinds of good films and everything else on the environment to keep people in the house. We also have Mary Kelly, who has rejoined our board. Mary has worked on practically every aspect of this event and like fetching water and doing all kinds of wonderful things to put us all together this evening. Ed Madigan from the Elks is, I don't believe he's here. But Ed is instrumental in, he's my contact with the Elks. And he has been absolutely wonderful guy to work with. The Elks co-sponsored this this evening. It's the first time they've done that and we're very pleased that they did. And we thank them very, very much for doing it. The people who were roaming around here, or I guess the one particular person who was roaming around here, picking up cards, handing out cards to people, is a member of the Charter's family. It's Meredith Charter, who is Tom's wife. And we thank her very much for helping this out. And I do have to point out the fact that last year, when we had one of these forums, we asked people in the audience if they would object that we, that is the Quality of Life Coalition, had the opportunity to have these forums, not just this one, but all the other forums that we do on television, on the City Channel. And actually, we got a rousing, rousing agreement from the people who were there. I hope you feel the same way, that this is worthwhile for everyone to see. And I would be remiss if I didn't do this and thank all the people who are here. You candidates were wonderful. You were articulate. And I think you gave us all a good idea of who you are and what you stand for. And it is just with great regret that the other slate was not here. I do wish them well and I certainly wish every single one of you well in the election. Thank you very much. And I just have one more thing to add, and that is that don't we have a great moderator Who makes all the difference. Who makes it happen.
Helen, it's November fourth, right? Is that the election day? November fourth, everyone. So we'll see you at the poll.